Let's go then, now to, let's see. We're going to do a little rearranging here. Item six is going to be heard first. And, excuse me, after item one. So, item six is item two now. So, try to keep track of that and then remind me, okay? We'll go first to non-agenda public comment. We've got 10 people who want to speak on the same subject. And because we have a loaded docket today, let's do, have one minute per speaker. So, that means you'll have a total of 10 minutes to be able to express yourself on your topic. Starting with Gloria Cooper. And followed by Fershiel Ramos. Ms. Cooper, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Hi, Myrtle. My name is Gloria Cooper, and I live at 5139 Solola Avenue. And I'm a member of the San Diego Organizing Project. I'm here this afternoon to urge you to release the racial profiling report from San Diego State University. So, that way, my community can know exactly where they stand. The report that was released earlier this year by the Police Department, it was bad. And we all know that it was bad. And raising children in the 4th District, it is very, very important that they know where they stand and if they will be stopped without even notice. So, we're asking you today to release the report. It's already bad, but let us know what San Diego State, and I understand that you're saying you want the complete report released, but we're San Diego. It's important for my community that the first phase of the report be released. Be transparent with us this day, today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's, you know, do this so we don't waste time. I know that all 10 of you are speaking to the same issue and this report. And again, as I said a month ago, just let me explain here because it might impact the comment that you're making, all right? And that is that there is no report at this point. San Diego State is doing research in three phases. The first phase is analyzing some, the raw numbers. Those raw numbers were presented by our Police Chief last year, and they are public records. So, if anybody wants those numbers, those numbers are available through public record. And we will release the report as soon as it's completed. It just isn't done yet. So, there is no report at this point. As soon as there is, though, we've made the decision since this committee and our office asked for the money to pay for this report and are as interested as anybody else in the findings from the San Diego State researchers. When it is released, it will be released to the public at the same time it's released to the city. Because we want to make sure everybody gets it at the same time and can sit down and take a look at all of the work that these researchers are doing at San Diego State, a complete report. So, with that, Mr. Ramos, you are next. And if Linda Palmer would be ready to go as soon as Mr. Ramos is finished speaking.
Okay, my name is Fershiel Ramos. I currently live at 3969 Idaho, number seven. I used to be a resident of District Four. I do work with the Filipino-American Arts and Cultural Festival as Ms. Councilmember Myrtle Cole is familiar with, and I'm sure Chris K. and then Todd Glory is familiar with as well. So, one of the reasons why I'm speaking on this and asking for transparency is because as a tattooed person of color, I don't want to have, to be profiled like that. Fortunately, I haven't been as profiled, but it would help to see the data. And it also helps to build the trust that we are so dying and desperately in need for. So, when the information is public, I'd like it to also be more public. Sure, it's there, but we would like to know that it's there. And I don't think a lot of us actually knew that the first part was out there. So, I think if we are trying to build a better relationship with the community, then that should be known.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next, Linda Palmer, followed by Sheila, is it Cooper? Sheila Cooper? Ms. Palmer, welcome.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm Linda Palmer. I live at 2866 F Street, Unit A, San Diego 92102. And I am a member of the San Diego Organizing Project. I'm in the Stockton area, which is probably one of the most underserved communities and the ones with the biggest impact with police reports like this. I would just like to follow up on what Councilwoman Emerald said. And I think what we would really want are the raw data that's available now from the San Diego State analysis. And I think that would be very helpful if that could be released to us. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, those numbers are public record through the city, so you know that. Deborah Samuels, is that you?
No, Sheila Cooper.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Sheila Cooper. I'm also a member of S D O P, a native and citizen of San Diego. And I have personally had encounters with racial profiling, and I just would ask that the report please be released.
Thank you very much. Followed by Deborah Samuels. Hello, Ms. Samuels. Good to see you. And then Cornelius Bowser. Pastor Bowser, if you'd be available. Hello.
Oh, hi. Well, my name is Deborah Samuels, as you say, and I'm a member of S D O P. And I lived in City Heights for like 20 years. Now, I'm living in Spring Valley, but I work for that city. And every time I'm on the freeway, on the streets, when I see they stop someone, it's either Latino or black. I never see a Caucasian person. So, I know you said they are raw data, but if we could just see the raw data. Because we just, as we working in my city for transparency with the police, we just want to have peace. Because if we have peace and hurt, everyone would get along great. So, and if the police there are to protect us, and we don't want to be scared of them, that's what happening in my community right now. And we just want to build that trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for everything you do in the community. Cornelius Bowser, hello Pastor Bowser. Followed by Martha Sullivan.
Yes, Pastor Cornelius Bowser, Pastor Charity Apostolic Church, also a member of S D O P and CAS, could pastor probably many other organizations. We do great work with San Diego Police Department within our partnership and collaboration that we do. And we know that Chief Zimmerman issued a report, and we saw that report. But it is our understanding that there is some data out there, the first part of the data. And to my understanding, the data is not going to be released until you get the full report. And so, if we can get some type of summary or anything from that first part, so that we can kind of get an understanding of what the, I believe it's San Diego State, the study that they've done or the research that they've done on the data, that we can look at that and get a proper assessment and compare reports to see whether or not we're really looking at racial profiling or not. So, that would be my comment.
Thank you very much. Martha Sullivan, followed by Tom Coate.
Hello again, councilmembers. I'm here to support the ACLU's request that the first phase of this study be released. The next two phases, which are interviews of the community and interviews of police officers, aren't going to change the analysis that San Diego State has done of the data that they've received from the San Diego Police Department. This is a very, very urgent issue for your constituents. They need to see that you're taking it seriously and that you believe in transparency and that you believe that the community has the right to participate in their own governance. Please, please reconsider this, this plan to delay this. It doesn't do anybody any good.
Thank you very much. David London, followed by Catherine, is it Mendoza, right? Okay, Mr. London.
Chairman Emerald, members of the committee. There is a report. It's partial. It's statistically oriented. But I was assured this morning by a member of the Public Affairs Department, School of Public Affairs at San Diego State, that the report was not deceptive in its current state, that it would be informative to an intelligent dialogue on the issue as it goes forward. So, based on that, I see no reason at all why these public records should not fully, freely be released now, rather than being deferred until conveniently after the primary election next year. That kind of behavior, that kind of timing, that kind of backtracking on representations and promises that had been made in the past, does nothing to reinforce goodwill of this body to the minority communities in San Diego or even communities such as myself, an old guy from Sweden, okay? It's political hypocrisy at its worst.
Thank you very much, Mr. London.
And there's no justification for maintaining that secrecy.
And our final non-agenda speaker is Catherine Mendoza.
Okay. I don't know if you can see this. You know, I want to echo Martha Sullivan's concern in the ACLU. From what they understand, the very first phase of data is ready. And it was, I think, believe that was the discussion from the ACLU. We have, the organization that I'm with, UAPTSC.org, have our own data analysts that would be more than happy to help out and analyze the raw data for it can be, for it to be shown to the public. I'm tired of my partner getting stopped on a Sunday in City Heights, taking the bus, walking to a bus stop, just because of the tattoos or, you know, by the way he looks and what he's perceived to be. And it's very frustrating that it's going to be until next year. If the raw data is done, then you should respect our wishes and respect what the community demands. And the community is demanding for that raw data to be released. But we can help.
Again, the raw data is available as a public record through the city of San Diego. If you need directions on how to file a Public Records Act request, I'm sure our city clerk would be more than happy to walk you through the process. And that would be the raw data that was introduced by our Police Chief this last year. That data, again, is being analyzed by researchers at San Diego State. We understand some of that, that analysis is done, and now they're going on to the second stage of their research project. And that a full report will be ready in either May or June of this next year. This was a report that the ACLU and people in the community requested. And so, our office went to the mayor, got $50,000 to pay for this study. And the researchers at San Diego State, I believe, are doing it right. And we will as well. Now, if you want news releases or some, some notice that the report is ready and we're putting it online, we're happy to do that. Certainly, you can share your email addresses with our office, and we'll put you on our blast list. As soon as it comes to us, it'll be out to you. I'm as eager to see the results of this research as anybody, being that my office took the initiative to get this study going in the first place. And I'm, I'm concerned too that it takes so long. But let's do it right. Let's allow the researchers to do what they do. And let's get a report that is meaningful and accurate and that will help guide us in the future. So, I just want you to know, I do respect the concerns here. I would like to see it too. But let's wait until there is a report to release, and then it will be released to the public. We won't see it firsthand. Everybody will get it at the same time. And then we'll come together and have a conversation about it. With that, I would like to go to committee comment. Mr. Gloria?
Thank you, Ms. Emerald. And I'm very mindful, Ms. Gleason probably doesn't want us to go too far into something that we're not agendized for. But did I hear you correctly in that the information the members of the public are asking for are available through the Public Records Act?
Yes, the report that Chief Zimmerman delivered this last year had all the raw data, excuse me, had all the raw data. Now, we can't get too far into it because this is not agendized, and it would be a violation of the Brown Act. So, she has made it clear that that is public information, so anybody in the public can file a Public Records Act request and get that information if it is not online. And I, I don't know. Is it online? Could somebody just give me a high sign? Yeah, may as well. And I understand you also released that raw data to the ACLU.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Shelley Zimmerman, Chief of Police. I gave a report, I don't remember the exact Public Safety Livable Neighborhoods Committee in front of all of you, that raw data was available. So, with, whatever that date was that I gave that report, all the data is there. You can see the entire presentation and all the data is in the report that is online from that Public Safety Livable Neighborhoods Committee meeting of last year.
And was that provided to the ACLU?
All that information was provided, yes.
Okay, so they've had it all this time. Please, this is not, this is not a back and forth here, and we're really kind of pushing the envelope by talking about it because it's not agendized, so.
I will, I will stop there. And Ms., Madam Chair, you have dealt with this issue far more directly for longer. I would just say that it probably would be wiser of the committee to just provide that information. If it already exists and is available under P R A, let's just hand it over and allow the community to respond to it. If that's currently available, I think in the spirit of transparency, I would rather the citizens not have to file that request. Just, let's just give, give it over, and if it doesn't match their desires, we'll probably hear from you next month, would be my guess.
I'm, I'm happy to do that. It's just that I can't go to San Diego State and give us, tell them to give us their unfinished work product. But the broad data that this analysis is based upon, absolutely, it's there, it's, it's in our system as a public record. So, we'll, we'll coordinate with the Police Department and get that information. We'll put it up online. How's that? Anything else? Okay, anybody else?
Again, I just want to also thank the public for coming out and speaking on this and keeping us aware of this. This is a concern. I don't think there's any reason why we're going to wait for an election. That's not.
We've provided the information. We've directed the public to it. They don't want to get it. We need to leave it unless you want to agendize it for a future meeting.
Yeah, and I don't want her to do anything, to say anything that is out of.
It's perfectly appropriate for the committee to direct the public as to where they can go to find this information, and that has been done at this point. And until this matter is agendized and properly noticed for a future meeting, we need to leave the discussion where it is.
Okay, but thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Mr. Kate, any comments from our mayor's office? Mr. Anderson? From our I B A's office? Mr. Olson? No? And Ms. Gleason? All right, thank you so very much. And I do appreciate everybody coming out. And again, the raw data, public record, and you have access to it anytime you want. I'm sure it's in the city's database. And if you have questions, we'll do some research and find out specifically where you can go to get it and help you, help you.
And as I had said, we're skipping ahead to item number six. It's actually our one action item today. Has to do with a new, a new contract for more body worn cameras. Chief Zimmerman here with staff. And when you sit down at those microphones, gentlemen, would you mind identifying yourselves for the record? And the floor is yours.
Rich Friedman.
Jerry Hera, Captain San Diego PD.
Good afternoon. I'm Shelley Zimmerman, Chief of Police. And as you just heard, with me here today is Captain Jerry Hera and Lieutenant Rich Friedman, who will be giving detailed specifics on our PowerPoint here in just a few moments. Just in some opening remarks, also present is, we have Officer Mark Pittman from Mid-City Division. Mark, if you just wanted to stand up here, who is available to give a demonstration of a body worn camera. He works, as I said, our Mid-City Division. If you need a demonstration, I'm not sure you need one right now.
We like movies here. So, go ahead.
I'm Officer Mark Pittman from Mid-City Division. Mid-City Division? There we go. Basically, I'm just going to explain how the cameras work and our everyday functions as patrol. So, what we do is we go to our substation, we'll get the cameras out of the docking station, and that's where they're charging. And we'll put them on. I wear mine on my chest. And there's a couple of other options. Some people wear them on their shoulders, and some will have them on their glasses. So, I like it on the chest. It's, it's a good, easy one to put on, and it's, it's stable, and there's no extra wires running around. So, from there, what we do is we put them on standby. And so, when we encounter some kind of contact, any kind of enforcement, we will activate them. And so, once we activate them, it records the previous 30 seconds. It, that 30 seconds doesn't have sound, but once we activate it, it's recording with the sound. So, pretty much, once I hit it, you just see me for like 30 seconds in the car because we already have them running once we're out of the car. So, then after we end the contact, we just hold the center button, and it will turn, that's when it turns off, it'll give a loud beep. And then what we do is we take out our viewers, which are connected to our phones, well, the work phones. And what we do is journalize the incident with the incident number. That way, like detectives and the authorized people have, could view the videos. And so, in my experience, I've actually really liked having the body cameras on because it de-escalates a lot of situations. Because we'll get people who pull out their cell phones and start recording because they think something's wrong. But we, I happily tell them, I've been recording this whole situation, and if they have any questions or complaints, they can, they can talk to our supervisors and view the videos later. And so, once we end our day, what we do is we journalize everything, we re-dock it at the substation, and it will upload to the system.
I was thinking we were going to have some moving video here today, but, but we're on here, all right? Good deal. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Officer Pittman. Thank you for that demonstration. Appreciate that. And as you heard, we've deployed almost all of our original 1,000 body worn cameras. And I would tell you, since deployment, which was, to refresh your memory, it was in June of 2014, we have obtained 492,000 evidence videos that we have uploaded into our secure evidence system. And I want to repeat that number, since deployment, 492,000. And as you heard Officer Pittman say, that we found the video evidence to be extremely helpful. They help in de-escalating situations. They have helped in reducing citizen complaints and allegations against our police officers, the reduction of our officers and the need to use higher levels of use of force to gain compliance. And I would tell you is that we are very proud to be a leader in body worn camera technology. So, we are here today to request approval for a two-year extension and modification to our existing TASER contract. It has been our goal to equip every uniformed patrol officer and sergeant with a body worn camera. But currently, we are several hundred short to accomplish this goal. We are also, as everyone is aware, we're trying to also increase our budgeted staffing. And so, to lower attrition number and then to, to have more patrol officers out in the street. So, for fiscal year, this fiscal year 2016, we have identified 2015 COPS funds that will purchase an additional 144 body worn cameras. This purchase will allow us to provide body worn cameras to our K-9, to our K-9 unit and to our graduating police recruits. This contract extension will also allow our Police Department the flexibility and the option to purchase additional body worn cameras for future fiscal years. And we are aware that these additional purchases will only take place if a funding source has been identified and is available. And I'd like to turn it over to Captain Hera and to Lieutenant Friedman to go through the PowerPoint about this extension.
Good morning, everyone. As you know, the San Diego Police Department is a world leader in the implementation of body worn cameras. In fiscal year 2014, we began the implementation of a five-year process to distribute 1,000 body worn cameras to your uniformed patrol officers. We are now in the third year of that contract, and our team has worked very hard. We have allocated just about all of the 1,000 body worn cameras. And all of the contract equipment, repair, licensing, storage are all included in that. As you can see in the current slide, we have distributed 300 cameras in the first year, 300 cameras in the second year, 400 cameras in the third year, totaling 1,000 cameras. However, the remainder of the TASER contract only provides additional storage space. There are no more body worn cameras to be allocated in the current contract. Here is the current cost breakdown of the contract with TASER. Note that 1.57 million came from 2015 COPS funds, and 378,000 still left on this contract has yet to be spent. As you know, it's been our goal to equip all of our uniformed patrol officers and sergeants with the body worn cameras. But we do not have body worn cameras for patrol sergeants, K-9 officers, and sergeants, reserves, and graduating academy recruits. Therefore, we are asking for a two-year extension and modification to the existing contract. And then this extension will allow us more flexibility to purchase more cameras. In just a second, Lieutenant Rich Friedman will go through the specific details of this request. However, without this request approval, the Police Department will need to return each year to the council to make any additional camera purchases. This modification will make us more efficient and help us provide body worn cameras to your officers without delay. And now Lieutenant Friedman will go through the specifics of this contract.
Thank you, Jerry. Beginning on fiscal year 2016, we'd like to purchase the 144 cameras, accessories and software licenses.
Is your microphone on? There.
There we go. Sorry about that.
There you go.
All right, thank you. So, fiscal year 2016, we're looking to purchase 144 cameras, the accessories, software licenses. And that will be funded by using the, the COPS funds that Chiefs and Room discussed earlier to make that purchase. In fiscal year 2017, we'd like the, have the option to purchase up to 300 cameras, accessories, software and licenses. And then in 2018 through 2020, purchase up to 150 cameras and accessories per year as needed. So, let's look at the cost breakdown for fiscal year 2016. The immediate purchase of the 144 cameras with the license and warranty, that will outfit the academy graduates and the K-9 unit at a total cost of just shy of $478,000, again, identified with the 2015 COPS funding. If you look at the cost breakdown for 2017, the option is to purchase 300 cameras. We'd allocate those body worn cameras to the patrol sergeants and other uniform patrol assignments and academy graduates. That would be a cost, if all 300 were purchased, of $768,000. In fiscal year 2018, we'd look at purchasing up to 150 cameras. And again, that would be to allocate the body worn cameras to the academy graduates at a cost of just shy of, well, $298,000. In 2019, again, 150 cameras. You can see that the numbers drop a little bit. It's down to, down to $213,000. And again, in fiscal year 2020, 150 cameras at a cost of $127,000, or, excuse me, $127,000. As you can see, as we go down in the years, we're not paying for the licenses and warranty until the end of the 2020. So, the cost, again, would, would be diminished. And we chose 150 cameras per year, the option to, to go up to that money, based on four academies a year, 50 people in an academy, that'd be 200. Then when you look at attrition, people not making it through the academy, not making it through, that we, we thought 150 should suffice if we needed to go up to that amount. And so, the cost summary looks something like this. For fiscal year 2016, if approved, the 478,000 for the 144 cameras. And then fiscal years 2017 to 2020, depending on what we need, it would be zero or up to the, the total amount that was discussed earlier. So, the total would be 478,000 to a maximum of 1.8 million. Again, this would be contingent on the adoption of each fiscal year's annual budget.
And I want to be clear also is that we have the money already allocated for the, this fiscal year. We have grant funded money for this. It's not general fund money. And that's why we say zero up to the different amounts for all the other fiscal years as we go through the budget process.
So, Lieutenant Freeman has covered the potential costs. And here are the breakdowns for cameras, units per year. So, we currently have 1,000 body worn cameras and the associated storage. We would like to purchase the 144 cameras this fiscal year with identified COPS funds. And then up to 300 cameras in fiscal year 2017, and then up to 150 cameras each additional year after that. And again, everything is dependent on available funding, and our current patrol staffing numbers and the need for body worn cameras at that time. The warranty includes unlimited equipment replacement, free software upgrades, and upgrades to generation two cameras after the two and a half year mark. And the future purchases that we will be making will be the generation two cameras. So, in summary, we are allocated, we will allocate these 144 cameras to academy graduates and to the K-9 unit, if approved. And then starting in July 2016, we'll equip patrol sergeants and many other uniform patrol assignments. And furthermore, this approval will give us the ability to provide body worn cameras to your future police recruits without delay. They graduate, they get a camera. Thank you, and we'll fill any questions at this time.
All right, thank you very much. And all of our committee members are on the lines. We'll go to the public first for their comments, starting with Kellen Rusinello, followed by Margaret Kuchnia, who'd be waiting to go on up. Mr. Rusinello.
Good afternoon, Chair Emerald and members of the committee. My name is Kellen Rusinello. I'm a staff attorney with the ACLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties. As we've said from the beginning, the ACLU has been cautiously optimistic about body cameras. We think that they can be a win-win for both the public and for law enforcement. But what's really going to make the difference is the policy that's in place in how those body cameras are used. One of the instances where we believe that revision is necessary to the policy is the public is never going to see the pub, the video, at least under the way that the policy is being interpreted currently. We've been told that due process is a concern and that we won't release the video if we feel that due process will be threatened. But in the, in the current case, the video is still not being released, even though no charges are being pressed. So, there are no due process concerns to be concerned with. And now we're being told that the public won't, can't understand the video because it's out of context. Well, if that's, if that's the case, if that's the argument that we accept, then the public will never see any video because there's always going to be other contexts that needs to be explained. So, we encourage this committee to think about this and other changes that are necessary to the body. to the body policy camera, so that it's not only a tool for law enforcement, but it's also a tool for the public to make sure that there's transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Margaret Kuschnia, followed by Catherine Mendonza.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Margaret Kuschnia. I live in your district, Council Emerald, and I want to say that, I want to just reflect what this gentleman said. It's like, when I heard about body-worn cameras, I was really excited. Okay, great, we're going to have transparency. We're going to all be able to see what happened. And now, no, we can't see what happened. As a matter of fact, what's the point of having them if we can't see, you know, if it's only a tool for law enforcement to make a case for what happened from law enforcement's side, then that camera doesn't mean anything. Let's just provide cameras for the whole public, because we're the ones who's seeing it from our side. And then we'll compare the two kinds of cameras or whatever. It's just, this whole thing doesn't make sense. There's no transparency here. I'm sorry, Chief Zimmerman, I don't feel like you're doing what the public needs. I don't feel like you're providing us with the information that we need to feel safe and comfortable. You know, I know the police are trying hard to do something good, but this is not helping. It's not helping. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine Mendonza, followed by Martha Sullivan.
Okay. Well, I want to open up and talk about an individual who was just killed in San Diego Gaslamp area, 39-year-old Lamontis Jones. We are currently in communication with his family, who are currently in Virginia right now. It could have been prevented. It could have been prevented. The officers, the two officers involved and the second officer that arrived on the scene, we have reason to believe that Lamontis Jones was not a threat even before the second officer arrived. Both officers' cameras were not on. Going back to late April of the year, for Dune, Rashna Had, another individual who was shot down, shot and killed, and again, the officer did not have his body-worn camera on. There was private video obtained, and I don't know what exactly was what happened when there was no charges filed against Browder, who shot for Dune. They're not turning the cameras on. In the policy itself, it says the officer's safety comes first. I believe that leaves a lot of wiggle room for them not to decide to turn them on. I'm ashamed, to be honest. I'm very ashamed. I'm ashamed at the fact that there are two men dead, and actually, three black men in the last month that have been murdered by San Diego Police Department, that could have seen their day in court, have could have been with their families during the holidays. Lamontis Jones could be alive today, and you know what? There's no objective point of, there was no cameras, there are no body-worn cameras. They weren't on by the police officers who shot him. Luckily, cellphone video caught this footage. But to be honest, I'm completely ashamed, Zimmerman. There are too many people that have been killed already.
Your time is up. Thank you. Martha Sullivan will be our last speaker.
Hello again. I just want to make a point here about the use of public funds. As Margaret said, you know, there are some definite advantages of having the body-worn cameras. And they were sold to the public with those advantages of being able to provide an objective perspective on what transpired between police officers and the person that they were interacting with. We've had, in the last, you know, five months, two officer-involved shootings where the body cameras weren't turned on by the officers. After the first one in May, when Mr. Nahad was shot, Chief Zimmerman publicly stated that she changed the policy that officers are to turn the cameras on before they respond to the scene, before they arrive at the scene. So now, in the last month, we've had another officer-involved shooting that resulted in a death of an individual. Two motorcycle officers, neither of whom turned on their body-worn cameras. And Chief Zimmerman defended them. She didn't say anything about they didn't comply with the policy. She didn't say anything about what was going to be done in light of that. So I think before we buy any more cameras and before we give our police department any more of our taxpayer funds, they need to demonstrate that they're capable of managing the funds they have already effectively. And it's your job as a city council to do that. They don't get a blank check. They've got to be held accountable, just like everybody else who's held accountable for their use of taxpayer funds. And I just, for the life of me, don't understand why our police department isn't held to the same standard as our health and welfare departments and other departments who are excoriated regularly for misuse of public funds, rightly or wrongly. So apply the same standard, please.
Thank you very much. We'll go now to members of the committee, starting with Ms. Cole.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate, Chief, the breakdown of the money's being spent in this contract. And as I stated earlier on, I support body-worn cameras. It's a win-win, as one of the public members stated. But yeah, there is a concern about making sure that the police officers turn them on when they exit their vehicle. Is there any additional protocol been put in place to address this issue, Chief?
Yeah, we continue to work on training. It does take some time to develop that muscle memory. And I will tell you, as I said at a press conference not too long ago after the last shooting, if our officers are staring down the barrel of a handgun, per our policy, we would expect that their first consideration would be to protect themselves and to protect our public. I will tell you that we are an excellent police department. And being excellent and being 100% correct often doesn't mean that you're 100% perfect in every situation. And we're going to use that gap between excellence and perfection, because often there is a gap between excellence and perfection, to continue to motivate us and inspire us to seek improvement every day. I'll tell you, along that road to perfection, there's going to be milestones. Some of those milestones are going to be very positive. Other milestones will be less than positive, but each one will assist us on our road to perfection.
Thank you, Chief. And I do understand that, being a former officer, I understand getting out of the vehicle, and there's, you know, your adrenaline's running, there's something that you have to do. You have to save somebody's life or, you know, make sure that your life is protected. I understand that. But now that we do have, and that was back in the day when we didn't even have these, the cameras. But again, for instance, dispatcher always asks, are you, you know, are you 10-4, are you okay? Is there a way that maybe a dispatcher can state if a person is going to a call, make sure that your camera's on? Can they, is there a code or is there something that they can do to make sure the officers turn them on when they go to a call?
Well, that was one of the policy changes that we made after that first incident, is that our officers now, before they arrive on scene where there's likely to be an enforcement contact, to make sure that those cameras are on. One of the other things that we did is when I was just back in Chicago at a major city chief's conference, and we have contacted our TASER, who is our provider of body-worn cameras, to see if there's something that, if an officer, you know, either pulls their weapon or pulls their handcuffs or maybe their radio or whatever it happens to be on their duty belt, that that would automatically start the recording. Because there could even be a consensual contact, which isn't even an enforcement contact. And the next thing you know, it turns into an enforcement contact. And so we are, TASER has told us that there, other police departments have asked for a similar type of automatic that it would start to record. And so it's not available yet, but we hope to, maybe in the next year, that that will be available.
I appreciate those last comments, because that was the next question, upgrading to cameras that automatically turn on. That's what you're getting to. That's what they're hoping.
Yeah, they're hopeful. And I had that conversation with them. They're hopeful, maybe in about a year or so. And other police departments have asked for that technology also.
Okay. And maybe you've answered this, but has there been any changes in the body-worn camera policy since the last time it came before this committee?
We did make some major changes to our body-worn camera policy, but I don't know if those major changes have come to this committee. But there were many major changes made to it. I don't know if it's come here or not, but we'll be more than happy to give.
Bring that back. If we could agendize that for a next meeting, that would be great. Chief, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Sure. And maybe you could elaborate on some of the other changes today.
Yeah, we, again, it has to do with the metadata and when we put the metadata in as soon as possible afterwards. And probably the best thing to do is to, I'll get everybody a copy. I know I've shared that, I know with some of the council members here. And we can just go through it instead of just doing it at the top of my head. It will take some time. There were some major changes that was made in that policy.
Yeah, it's morphing. Next up is Mr. Kate.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. And thank you, Chief, and all for the presentation. Just a couple of questions regarding portion of the contract. Actually, first off, there are approximately, you said, 140 left to be deployed on the cameras. Is that correct?
No, we're asking for 144 additional, which we have already identified our COPS funding for that. We have the funding for that. This, really what we're doing here today is asking, seeking approval to extend the contract.
So from the current contract, there's nothing left to purchase or be deployed? Those all have been purchased and deployed, then?
The thousand, yes.
Okay, want to clarify that. And then there's a slide on, about the replacement schedule about free, I guess, upgrades or replacement of the previous cameras. Does that apply to those purchased under the previous contract as well, too? Not just the ones on the new contract?
Yes, that is correct. That's all, 1,000 cameras are under that particular warranty.
Okay, perfect. And then you said on the current contract, there was the request for additional storage. Under the current contract, is not going to be a need for any additional storage now for the data, or that's all included within the purchase?
For the current contract right now, with our policy that we have in place, we won't need additional storage with our policy in place.
Okay. So they're, but they're the responsible party, though, for all, for maintaining the data?
Yes, evidence.com.
Okay, perfect. And then my last question on the funding source for the upcoming year for '17, so it hasn't been identified yet. And, but there are, this last paragraph on the staff, I was a little confusing. So there's, the MOA seeks to expend a portion of the COPS 2015 allocation in the amount of $478,000 during '16, but funding has to be identified for '17. So there is no additional grant dollars that may be available or sought after for '17 at all?
We will be seeking it. We will be getting some COPS funding, but at this point, we don't know the, I don't have the exact dollar amount as to what that might be. So that's why we have zero up to a certain amount. And we'll have to look at that when we get that funding.
Okay, perfect. So no matter what, then, some or all of the amount for '17 will be in your requested budget for?
That'll be determined during that time.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Well, like Ms. Cole and members here, I think we're all supportive of the body-worn cameras. Appreciate you wanting to come back and document an additional discussion about the policy in general. But at this point, I think, from a safety standpoint, from our side, we want to make sure all of our officers, including the new recruits, are outfitted with the cameras for the time being. So I'm happy to make the motion to support the action.
Terrific. Thank you, and I'll second that. Mr. Gloria.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Jerry and Chief, and Rich, for the presentation. I appreciate it. Picking up perhaps where Ms. Cole had left off with regard to the concept that you're pursuing, Chief, and you sort of talked about the additional technological steps that need to be taken to make them go on right away. When you said it's not available yet, is it because it's not technologically possible? It's not, what's the limitation to having that?
The discussion that I had with TASER is that it's not, that technology doesn't exist or working toward that, and they're not going to put it out until they know that it works, because it is their company. It's their trust. It's, when they say that it's going to work, they want to make sure that it works. I offered to say that we'll be the first department, as we were, as a leader in this, to test it. And again, that would be a failsafe. It goes back to our training. We want to develop that muscle memory. Obviously, we would want our officers to be able to have the opportunity to put them on all the time. But that's why we wrote in there, and I will tell you, including with the ACLU and other stakeholders, we're in 95% agreement on our body-worn camera policy. And one of the things that we all agreed on, that officer's safety and our citizens' safety would take precedence over the ability to record an event.
Right. And I absolutely understand that. I think that the lapses where that's happened, I can't imagine being in that position as the officer. Some say, of course, it creates questions. And so this additional technological innovation would be helpful. And I'm, what you just said is exactly what I'd hope you'd say. We've been leaders in body-worn cameras. Let's pioneer this stuff, too.
That's what I offered.
In the meantime, is it feasible to leave the cameras on all the time?
It is not. And then, again, again, let's just be clear is that it's always on. It's just not necessarily recorded. As I spoke about, that we have had 492,000 evidence videos, by video evidence of enforcement contacts. If it's always recording, we're talking about this, I wouldn't even hazard a guess as to how much money I'm going to be asking for, for storage costs, and how we would possibly, how we would do that.
Well, and the reason I ask that, and I think some of my colleagues know, you know, we've stored every email that's ever been sent in the city of San Diego. We have a policy of unlimited retention of email documents. And that costs us, this is a bone of contention that I have, but I would hazard to say a couple million bucks to do exactly that. I mean, think about decades and decades worth of emails. Now, when Ms. Cole emails her staff to go fill a pothole, I don't know that that needs to be kept for eternity, but that's currently the city's policy, and we pay for it because we've decided, for whatever reason, that's necessary. I understand that having a full-scale video on the magnitude that we're describing is probably very expensive, as you know. But I would say that this administration has made the conscious decision that it was worthy of spending millions of dollars to keep emails. I'm curious why a similar discussion, absent the ability to move to a technology that's a little bit more flexible, is not being pursued.
You know, you come up with, and I understand the question, and we have talked to many other police departments and community stakeholders. I have this conversation every day with some members of our community. And there's a lot of questions about privacy concerns. People invite us into their homes and call us on their worst possible day. And by having the policy as an enforcement contact has been a very good balance as to our public's privacy and also to what we're trying to get to, to the accountability. It is a win-win for both. And when you start talking about that, the possibility that you might be recording every single thing, you then get into other avenues of really privacy concerns for many individuals.
What about the officer who made the great presentation? Good job, wonderful spokesmodel. We'd like the corporate sponsorship with TASER for giving you up there. The camera goes back 30 seconds, and that's great. Is that flexible? Can it go back a minute or two minutes?
It's interesting that you said that. We just had this conversation, and our generation-two cameras, and those 144 that we'll be purchasing, and when we upgrade those other cameras to the next generation, so the generation-two, they will, it's my understanding, be up to 90 seconds and possibly a little more. And that's, I think that's great. And that's another additional minute than what we currently do not have currently. So, you know, I would tell you is that I'm curious to see what this is going to look like five years from now, or maybe even two years from now, because I would think that the technology is going to continue to evolve. And when you're a leader in this, we're, quite frankly, the ones that are working through many of these issues that other police departments are following. And so that's a great question.
And that's the sympathy that I have in this situation. I would note that Lieutenant Friedman didn't turn on his microphone when he sat down. And it wasn't because you're trying to make sure I couldn't hear what you were saying. It was an honest mistake. For the record, he said it's an honest mistake with the microphone off again, but. And Chief, what you said, we've gone out on a limb and did this first. And so mistakes will be made. So I'm not trying to hold anyone to account for honest mistakes and lesson learned. We're pioneering some stuff here, and I'm okay with that. I think a great city ought to be pioneering some technologies. But one of the things that is concerning, and some of the testimony got to this today, that in the process of trying to build transparency and trust, there are now new angles of, that are representing concerns about transparency and lack of trust. And so hence, the questioning about data storage ability, technological innovations, you know, minor tweaks, you know, 30 seconds to 90 seconds, whatever we can do, got to the policy issue. And Chief, thank you very much for sharing this policy and a number of other policies that you've worked to develop for this. I know that there have been some substantial changes to this particular policy, and I can't remember what all they are, but I know that there were a few. I do think it's worthwhile for this policy, this committee to look at it. Our distinct, the chief's here to keep us safe. She and her team of officers are here to keep us safe. Our job, we're policymakers. That's what we do. We're decision makers. And And to the extent that this is cutting-edge stuff, that it's, you know, first in the nation kind of stuff, I think it's the responsibility of this committee to look at this. And not just for body worn cameras, but for other technological innovations. I would personally prefer that some of these discussions be had before we acquire some of this technology. I think Kellen got to this a little bit, in anticipation perhaps of some of these concerns. But I think that it's a part of what the public pays us to do. This is why we have jobs, is to look at some of this. Not to tell the Chief how to do her job, this is in consultation with the police department, with the POA and others, but also with the community to make sure that, you know, maybe we would have had a discussion about whether or not 30 seconds was enough, maybe it's something more. Maybe then the Chief says it's not technologically possible. But I think this would be a hallmark or reflection of a healthy discussion of a robust legislative branch that we probably should do. And I think in response to Ms. Cole's comments, Ms. Emerald, you indicated a willingness to do that, I think that, I think that that would be a wise thing. You covered the budget issues that are involved in this, mostly COPS grants, stuff that's already been budgeted. Any additional costs associated with some of the things that you're looking at, with the innovation, with the kind of go-live as soon as you pick something up? Is that, would that be more costly?
I would, I would imagine there'll be some cost to it. We don't know what that might be until, you know, we, we speak with them. But again, I, I offered to be the, the first department to take a look at this technology, and we'll take it from there.
The last thing, would, I would just be curious, I know that, Chief, you talked about the, the reduction perhaps in...
Complaints.
Complaints, yes, thank you. But also an increase in assaults, I think is something you said in the past.
Yeah, 36% increase in assaults on our police officers, although complaints and allegations were reduced substantially.
I think one of the reasons we made this investment was the, this was in reaction to some of the liability that we've, we've taken on through some officer misconduct, a few bad apples amongst a lot of really, really good public servants. Do we have any data on how we're doing from a liability standpoint? Are claims less? Have we paid out less money in terms of settlements since these cameras have been operational?
I don't have the dollar amount that, that would be something I think the city attorney would need to look at. But I will tell you, not a week goes by now where we don't get one or two complaints that come in, and we look at the body worn camera video, and we show it to complainant, often has an opportunity, the complainant to view the video. And usually, they come back and say, I couldn't, I can't believe how intoxicated I was, and how do I apologize to the officer, because clearly, clearly what I said happened didn't happen.
Yeah. Well, I'd love to see, I don't know if the city attorney's office can provide us with that. I think all of us have had to vote in, in times past to authorize payment to folks, not just for the police department, there's plenty of things, plenty of, you know, with 10,000 employees, they interact with the public every day, sometimes bad stuff happens. But I think our investment in this was the belief that whatever we paid for in this was, number one, maybe covered by the lack of, of liability claims, but also would buy the public trust that we're trying to, to keep and maintain. And that's, of course, priceless, you know, that whatever dollar amount it is, you know, is, is minor in comparison. But I'd be interested in that data as we, as we go forward. And again, interested in a conversation about the policies that dictate this stuff. The public testimony today, I think, says that they're expecting us to do that work.
All right. Very good. And yes, in your, maybe in January, we could come back and have a discussion about policy. But we'll work with the consultant and see what we can pull together. Ms., Ms. Cole has another question.
Real quick question, Chief. Have we ever had vehicle cameras?
We have not. We have not. I think several years ago, I should probably say many years ago, there were a few that may have piloted vehicles, but we do not have it. We do not have in-car camera, cameras, no.
You know, the reason why is, you know, I watch cop shows a lot, and, and, I don't know why, I know why. But, and also, I do, and I watch also Call on Camera. And there's a lot of police vehicles with cameras on them, and it does show a lot. I'm just wondering if there's, you know, maybe in the future, we could also have the other?
Well, I would tell you, at this point, you know, our officers spend a lot of time out of their vehicles. And having in-car camera only shows, again, what's happening right in front of the vehicle. Our officers get out of the, you know, if they're not right in front of the vehicle, then you're not necessarily going to see what happens. And the camera is on the officer.
I understand both, right. But, you know, that, while you're driving, you know, that is footage. Once you get out of the car and turn your, you know, body cameras on, that's another part of the footage. So just wondering about that. But that's not an op, that's not something that we were ever...
That's something that I'm looking at, at this time.
In the future, oh.
A huge proponent of body worn camera, and we'd like to get all of our patrol officers outfitted with them first.
And I am, too. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to stop watching Call on Camera.
It's my understanding that you are doing community outreach, though, and meeting with, are you meeting with any community groups at all?
We, this, this body worn camera topic comes up, I would tell you, in virtually every, seems like, conversation that we have. If, if it's not brought up to us, we bring it up. And, and one of the things that we do, not just for myself, but our other officers, is we just get out of our cars and we start to go talk with, with individuals. And we, we broach this conversation because these are everyday individuals that they just want to be safe in their neighborhood, and we had these conversations with them about what do they think? Because often, you know, they're not going to come down to a city council meeting, they're not going to necessarily talk to the media or talk to, you know, whoever. They're just, want to go out and just, you know, be safe in their neighborhood. So we had these conversations with them about what do you think about privacy? What do you think about our policy? And we get a lot of feedback, and I will tell you, overwhelmingly, our policy is very supported by our community.
Yeah, that's the same I've heard, too. I don't know what the explanation is for people jumping your police officers or assaulting them at this higher rate, unless they just don't like seeing a camera on them, I don't